Madam Speaker, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I'd like to make a motion to place Resolution Number 39-33 LS in the third reading file.
Any objection? Hearing none.
Thank you very much. Mr. Speaker, I'd like for everyone to kind of, you know, imagine exactly what has happened here and imagine, of course, or even think if any of their family members were present in Guam between the years of 1946 to 1962. Because at that time, the United States government and the Atomic Energy Commission conducted nuclear tests in the South Pacific between those years. Sixty-seven nuclear devices were detonated. And in ninety seconds of that detonation, the mushroom cloud climbed up to fifty-seven thousand feet into the atmosphere and within thirty minutes had stretched sixty miles in diameter with the base of the mushroom head joining the stem at forty-five thousand feet. The aftereffect of any radioactive fallout from the detonation of nuclear bombs is that it would then travel in the atmosphere for about twenty-four hours before it descends back into the earth. So those radioactive particles then were carried through jet streams in the atmosphere, into the environment, rather dropping into the environment and causing multiple health and environmental problems. It just so happens that Guam is located approximately 1,200 miles directly west of the test sites. The radioactive dust particles travel through the westward flowing jet streams from the Marshall Islands and settled on Guam. Ships that were present in the Marshall Islands during the nuclear testing were decontaminated in Guam harbors with acetic detergents and the runoffs from the operations went directly into the local fishing and reef environments. There were reports from the United States Navy that indicated that they had full knowledge of the situation but failed to warn the local population. Now, in 1990, of course, former President George H. Bush signed into law HR 2372, which became public law 101-426 relative to the Radiation Exposure Compensation Act known as RICA. That law covered those who were affected by nuclear fallout during atmospheric testing but only in Nevada and the Marshall Islands. In that law, a trust fund was created and was instituted with about $100 million appropriated for claim compensation of persons meeting a specific health criteria after exposure to ionizing radiation. There's been many other bills that have been introduced in Congress year after year to amend it. And the amendment was to either extend the time period, the amendment was to add the uranium miners, uranium millers, or transporters, and even downwinders on-site participants. So the government of Guam, and the legislature in particular, have consistently urged and supported the expansion of RICA to include Guam as a downwind site. And I have to give credit to former senators and former speakers who fought this for many, many years. Former Senators Angel Santos, Carmen Fernandez, former Speaker Mark Forbes, former Speaker Antonio Pincu, and former Speaker Ben Panglinen all worked to petition Congress for Guam's inclusion in RICA. Two of them battled cancer, and in their honor, I intend to continue this quest for compensation. I would also like to recognize someone who's really been in the forefront of this, and that's Mr. Robert Celestial, who heads the Pacific Association for Radiation Survivors. He has been on the forefront of this issue for Guam for many, many years. He is working with my office to prepare a registry because nothing else has been done so far, and we're hoping that with the registration of these individuals, we would have a sense of how many people on Guam qualify for RICA. I'd like to announce the following diseases that are considered compensable by RICA: leukemia, multiple male loma, lymphoma, and primary cancers of the pharynx, small intestine, salivary gland, brain, stomach, urinary bladder, colon, thyroid, pancreas, female or male breast, esophagus, bile ducts, liver, gallbladder, lung, and ovary. Those are the diseases in which then are considered compensable by RICA. There are many who have continuously in Congress reintroduced these resolutions, I mean bills, in Congress, and the legislature has always been in the forefront since 2005, 2007, 2009, 2011, and 2013, and today, 2015. We are sending, of course, the resolutions to all of the primary sponsors of these bills in both the House and the Senate. We're also going to reach out to our colleagues, I mean, our people who are currently living in the mainland to not only lobby their own congressmen and senators as well, to then support this proposed amendment to expand the downwind areas that's covered by RICA to include all of Arizona, Nevada, New Mexico, Colorado, Idaho, Montana, and Utah for the Nevada test site, New Mexico for the Trinity test site, and Guam for the Pacific test. So the legislature has unequivocally been supporting these proposed amendments to RICA to include Guam as a downwind area. So I urge my colleagues, and I know it's a resolution, and I urge you to please, at the same time, not just supporting this resolution, but if you have any family members out there who were here on Guam, and I would say almost everyone's parents, you know, have been here between 1946 to 62, is to urge them and other family members is to support this resolution. Write to family members in the mainland and ask them to do the same with their own representative in Washington, D.C. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Any senators wish to be heard on this? Senator Muniya Barnes? Anyone after Senator Muniya Barnes?
Mr. Speaker, I'd just like to briefly rise and support Resolution Number 39-33 LS, and I'd like to thank the good speaker for giving me the opportunity to be her co-sponsor. Mr. Speaker, when the good speaker here was talking about the many years that this august body has stood in trying to have Guam recognized and improve and increase the compensation for those areas that are affected by this radiation, I want to say that without fail that one of the longest-standing advocates for this and who also works closely with the survivors of those who have been, the Pacific Association of Radiation Survivors, Mr. Robert Celestial, Dr. Chris Perez, and others who have been for so many years had loved ones affected by this and also them being affected themselves, I want to say that 2005 may not be so far away, may to you and me be only ten years. But since this detonation happened, Guam and all the surrounding areas were affected because of how the radiation contaminants had traveled. I want to say that you and I know that every day, if not every weekend, we go to more and more funerals. And before, we used to look at the number-one cause of death being cardiac arrest or some other medical condition. But when you look today, more and more of our family loved ones are dying from cancer. And I don't know, Mr. Speaker, but if you look at the statistics, and I know that you're very near and dear to that, and as far as those dying of cancer here on Guam, we even have a nonprofit organization that was just opened recently, less than three years ago, if I'm not mistaken, that is trying to deal with the number of increased cases of cancer here. And I just want to tell you that in that effort, that we don't stop and that we continue to move forward in getting Guam included and look at the compensations that are due for our island residents, more importantly, to those who continue to be in the strong front, to Mr. Celestial and the PARs Committee. I want to say thank you for never giving up, and I know that maybe one day soon Uncle Sam will truly listen to what we have to say here. This beautiful tropical paradise that we call home, that we call Guam, has been a very giving and loving island for many centuries, and I just want to say that this act that addresses all the other places in the United States should include our island of Guam. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak and support and again reiterate what Speaker Wantpat said about asking family members who are off-island to write to their congressman and woman or senate members to help us in this effort moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other senator wish to be heard on the resolution? Any other senator wish to be heard on the resolution? Seeing no hands, Madam Speaker, you're invited to close.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I thank my colleague, of course, and I'm sure everyone here will be very supportive of this, but if I may, because Senator Morrison sat through the public hearing, I'd like to add him as a co-sponsor as well. Thank you.
Hearing no objection. On the motion to send the resolution to the voting floor, there being no objection. Madam Speaker, you're recognized on your second resolution.
Thank you very much again, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to make a motion to place Resolution 52-33 to the third reading file, and this is relative to petitioning U.S. Congress to increase the annual appropriation for Compact Impact Aid.
Seeing no objection.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'd like to just basically reiterate on a few things. As everyone knows, of course, that this Compact or Free Association Act of 1985 was implemented in 1986, establishing a relationship between the United States and the Federated States of Micronesia and the Republic of the Marshall Islands. And this compact allows, among other things, for citizens of these three freely-associated FAS, that means Marshall Islands, Palau, and FSM, to enter and reside indefinitely in the United States, including its territories, without regard to the Immigration and Nationality Act visa and labor certification requirements. Resolution 52-33 is urgently requesting or petitioning Congress to increase the annual appropriation for Compact Impact Aid from $30 million a year to $185 million to the affected jurisdictions who provide services to migrants from the freely-associated states. This resolution supports a bill introduced in the House of Representatives on February 10, 2015, by Congressman Mark Takai from Hawaii and co-sponsored by Congressman Greg Sablon from CNMI, Congresswoman Tousie Gubert from Hawaii, and our Congresswoman Madeleine Bredalio. HR 854, known as the Compact Impact Aid Act of 2015, seeks to increase the annual appropriation for Compact Impact Aid by $155 million. The intent of the congressional measures recognizes that insufficient sums have been appropriated to cover the costs incurred by Guam, the Commonwealth of the Northern Mariana Islands, and the state of Hawaii resulting from increased demands placed on health, educational, and other social services by individuals from the Federated States of Micronesia, the Republic of the Marshall Islands, and the Republic of Palau. Our community has graciously hosted our neighbors from the region who come to further their education, to seek employment, or to receive health care that is not provided in their islands. Unfortunately, our financial resources are finite, and we struggle as a government to afford providing these services. This resolution asserts the obligation of the federal government to take responsibility for negotiating the compacts of free association without Guam's input or consent. They were aware that a mass migration would occur, and they have an obligation to assume the cost of the impacts of this migration on host communities like Guam. In fiscal year 2015, Guam's share of the $30 million decreased from $16,800,000. This is ten times less than $144 million the government of Guam spent in fiscal year 2014 on services to FAS migrants. Despite repeated requests to increase Guam's compact impact reimbursements, the federal government is decreasing the amount. This issue needs to be resolved, and I hope that Congress passes HR 854. We all know that the governors, the current governor, Governor Calvo, has gone there and spoken to the federal officials. All of the former governors of Guam have also appealed to the U.S. Congress and the U.S. President. Previous Guam legislatures have adopted numerous legislative resolutions. Even one member of this legislature at one time attempted to sue the U.S. government in hopes that the reimbursement for this unpaid compact impact cost to increase the funding in Guam's share. So I hope that my colleagues will see fit the need and the urgency in supporting this and in urging Congress as well to pass HR 854. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Any other senator wish to be heard on this resolution? Any other senator wish to be heard on the resolution? I see no hands up, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, you may close.
I hope that when no one stands up to speak doesn't mean they don't support it, but I'm sure they do. And again, I'd like to go ahead and request for Senator Morrison to be a co-sponsor to this because he sat through that afternoon with me, and thank you very much.
Hearing no objection. Is your other bill ready? Okay. Senator Muniya Barnes, you're recognized on your resolution.
Mr. Speaker, if I may, if I can move Resolution 21-33 COR to the third reading, and if I can speak on it briefly, I would appreciate it.
Any objection? Hearing none.
Mr. Speaker, on the 32nd Guam Legislature, public law 32-226 directed the Tramor Land Trust Commission to select a suitable lot to exchange with the Department of Public Health and Social Services from property reserved for the department's use with the property owned by Tramor Land Trust Commission for the purposes of constructing a foster care facility. The Tramor Land Trust Commission has selected and approved Track Number 9, Block F, Lot 14, Baragada, and it's containing an area of 10,049.75 square meters plus and minus for that land exchange. I want to note, Mr. Speaker, that during the selection process, other lots were considered, but this particular lot was deemed the most suitable based on the present need and upon consideration of the foster needs for our children. During the public hearing on this resolution, Mr. Speaker, which was held on April 15, Mr. Mike Borha from the Department of Land Management testified that the commission indeed looked at three separate lots and considered the areas, and that the noted particular lot, which was Track 9, Block F, Lot 14, Baragada, it was unanimously selected by the Tramor Land Trust Commissioners. The Commissioners considered a conceptual plan that was developed by the Guam Housing Urban Renewal Authority that included not only a residential facility for the program but also a resource service building. Information was provided by the Department of Public Health and Social Services that indicate, Mr. Speaker, that just in the year 2014, 236 children were under the Child Protective Services custody, and out of those 236 children, 178 of them were Tramor. These 178 children are beneficiaries of Tramor Land Trust, and these children and those that will come after them have no one but the government of Guam to look after them, to provide for them, to protect them, and more importantly, to shelter them. The original lot that was in question last year, Mr. Speaker, was rejected for a number of reasons, and among those reasons was, we want to be completely honest, that the lot was located near an affluent neighborhood. I want to say, Mr. Speaker, that these children are victims of circumstance. They find themselves as wards of the government, not because of anything that they have done, but because it's what is being done to them. And I want to tell you, Mr. Speaker, that this election process for this foster care home has happened not only once but twice, and there will always be someone who can come up with some kind of opposition, but I want to tell you, Mr. Speaker, that the need for this facility is very clear. I know that when we had the public hearing, I know that the support staff from the Department of Public Health and Social Services, a lot of the social workers came out and spoke for the need. I want you to know, Mr. Speaker, that there was also question about why the increase from a lot that was given before in Tumuning almost doubling in size, and the answer from the director from Gura was they would have had to work within their footprint. I want to share with you, Mr. Speaker, as we talk about these children and the need for protection and the need for us as our obligation to make sure that they're safeguarded, I want you to know that when this reservation was done to build a foster care home facility, it was done over 20 years ago. And for me, closing the chapter to this program and wanting to make sure that we take care of these foster children, I want to say to you now, Mr. Speaker, that this is the right thing to do. There are some times when our folks talk about not wanting things in their backyard or next to them, but these children are in this circumstance because, not because they want it, it's not because of their doing, it's because of circumstances way beyond their control. And, Madam Speaker, there will be probably a lot of concerns out there about why, what are we doing this, why are we adding, why are we looking into making another building? First, you only wanted a shelter, now you want a full resource building, and I'm going to say that if you can build a facility that can address not just the need of protection but to continue to provide the services and have a facility to give them the care and attention and the educational need, I'm going to say that the government would have done their, would do their job. And this is one way to show that we as policymakers and we as one government who's only mission is to provide for the basic services for our community, I'm going to say that we will be doing right by them by supporting this effort and building this facility, this plan that has been already laid out for us to make sure that these children will be protected, safeguarded, but more importantly, that they know that they would have a safe place to go to. So thank you, Madam Speaker, for giving me the opportunity to speak on this resolution, and I humbly ask that my colleagues please look at this effort that we've worked so hard on and help make this vision become a reality to take care of our foster children. See you tomorrow.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, Senator Tomeda, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Along the way, I've asked a lot of questions about this foster home and about the land that it was going to be put on. Now, first of all, I just want to state that I very strongly object to the suggestion that the first location that was chosen was rejected because it was close to an affluent area. If the person that said that can show me in the committee report where, in fact, that was the case, then I will then sit down and shut up. But my understanding was that the site was rejected because of the concern about the safety of building a foster home in an area that's close to the cliff line, and that's all. And if anybody else wants to read into it that you've got these insensitive people living in affluent homes, I think that individual owes an apology to that particular neighborhood. I did raise the question about why is it that the first time this issue came to the legislature, they were fined with a property that was just one acre in size? When that was rejected, the Land Trust Commission, Tramor Land Trust Commission, was directed to go find property, other properties within the Tramor Land Trust inventory that can then be used or recommended for this foster home. So remember that initially, one acre was sufficient for the project. Then the Tramor Land Trust Commission came back and they said, okay, fine, in fact, not just one acre, we're going to give you two and a half acres, as if we've got land that's just, you know... that's just, you know, that we got more of the land than we have, than we need to start giving away. And I think the question had to be asked, well, what has changed in these weeks that have passed that now we need two and a half acres? As the chairman for the land committee, it was certainly my responsibility to question, and it was my fiduciary responsibility to ensure that we're protecting Chamorro Land Trust properties, and we're not just giving it away willy-nilly. So, the Department of Land Management came back, in fact, even a member of the Chamorro Land Trust Commission had questions about why now do we need two and a half acres as opposed to the one acre that was being requested for several weeks prior? And that particular member had a very valid question, and so the response that came back from Land Management was, there was all these plans to build these cottages and all kinds of structures. In fact, there was $1.2 million that has been identified, that as soon as this is approved, they can start the project right away. And so if that's the case, then, I would like to make an amendment to this resolution adding an additional whereas statement that reflects what was stated at the public hearing, which stated that, one, there is a need for this foster home, fine, I have no argument with that. Two, there was one, there are funds have already been identified, to the tune of $1.2 million to begin this project. Fine, that's great. If that is the case, then, then that follows that we should add a third resolve to this resolution, that the project should begin within three years. If not, then the land should be returned to the Chamorro Land Trust inventory. And so, we can take a recess, and I'll ask legal counsel to assist me in drafting up that new whereas statement and the new resolve statement, and I would move that those amendments then be placed in Resolution Number 21-33. The second point that I want to make, Madam Speaker, is the fact that I did also raise the question about the force and effect of a resolution, in this case, where we're using properties from the Chamorro Land Trust inventory. And I had suggested earlier that if it wasn't done, I was going to go ahead and take the initiative to introduce legislation, which will have the force and effect of law, that will then support the land that has been set aside for this foster home, which certainly would be to the benefit of the project because they would protect that. A resolution, in fact, I was reading, and I guess I was looking up on the internet, so, what's the force and effect of a resolution? A resolution is equivalent, is about as equivalent to the opinion column of the PDN. It just states how we feel, the position that we're taking, I'm not done yet.
Madam Speaker, can I rise to a point of inquiry, please? Just because I want to lay the ground rule on how a resolution came to play.
Madam Speaker, I didn't yield.
It's a point of information based on why a resolution was introduced instead of a bill.
I didn't ask for clarification.
And that's why I'm doing a point of information, Madam Speaker, by me?
No, no.
I'm not asking for a clarification.
I want to state that based on what was brought up, because he talked about how a resolution doesn't hold weight when it's introduced by the legislature, and I just want to share with you that based on what was formulated in the 32nd Guam Legislature with Bill Number 332-32, and the amendments made on discussion on this deliberative body, there was an amendment that was made to make sure that when it came down, that the legislature, instead of having to introduce a bill, that they could do it by resolution, and that's the only reason why a resolution was introduced and not a bill.
And Senator, you would have an opportunity to make that statement on your closing statement. So, Senator Ada, you may continue, or do you want to take a recess right now?
Maybe we better take a recess right now while things are...
Thank you, we're going to recess then.
Senator Ada, Tom Ada, we left with you wanting to proffer an amendment.
Yes, Madam Speaker. First of all, when I was speaking, I had suggested that I wanted to make an amendment in the where asked clauses, and I would like to withdraw that. We can do without the where asked clauses.
Okay, so on that, since we, oh no, we didn't, you mentioned it, you're right, we didn't call for a vote for it.
Right, so I'm withdrawing that, erase that.
Yes, okay.
However, I do want to proffer an amendment to add, and it's been passed around, to add the following to the first resolve clause. It reads, the first resolve clause is on page one, page 10, it reads, "Resolve that Imena 33 Nales Laturan Guahan accepts tract nine, block four, lot fourteen, Barigata for the land exchange required by public law number thirty-two dash two twenty-six." And we should add to that then, the language, "Provided that if construction of the contemplated foster care home does not commence within three calendar years of enactment of this act, then that tract of land shall revert to the inventory of the Tomorrowland Trust Commission." And that provision, of course, certainly is very consistent with the statements that were made at the public hearing, where it was stated that there's 1.2 million dollars that has been identified and set aside for this project. And secondly, that the project is urgently needed. So if it is urgently needed, really, there's no reason, and the money's already available, maybe three years is generous, but if anybody wants to lessen that timeframe, they're welcome to do so, but I'm suggesting three years. So that's my amendment, Madam Speaker.
On the amendment, objections? So ordered. Oh, too late. On the main motion then, you can speak. Not on the amendment now, but you can build that into your conversation. On the main motion, Senator Spalding.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I appreciate the effort that's going into this project for a foster care home for our children. However, given the information that was presented here today and also at the public hearing, which is in essence that this project is urgently needed, on top of it, there is 1.2 million dollars available to be built. On top of it, that this has been in discussion according to the author of the legislation the past 20 years, then I would imagine that three years is a little bit generous. In fact, more than just a little bit generous, quite generous. If everything is in place except the land, and here we are saying, okay, here's the land, then I believe that if construction is not commenced, we're not even talking about finishing, we're talking about commencing, about building it, about maybe even doing the plans, and I'm sure there are plans in place of what kind of design and the structure is going to look like, then I think, and I would like to make an amendment then, to change that three years to perhaps eighteen months. We're to some good weather, I think, again, if it is as urgent as everybody says it is, if it's been in the works for the past 20 years, if there is 1.2 million dollars and now there's land available, I say let's start it. And I think if we shorten that timeline, that will definitely at least let everybody on notice that everybody, from the governor all the way to the legislature, to those involved with this, that this is definitely a priority that needs to take place. So I would like to proffer an amendment that would shorten the timeline from three calendar years to eighteen months.
On the amendment, Senator, there's an objection. Does anyone like to speak? Senator Nicholas, you recognize?
First, Madam Speaker, before, if I do speak, I would like to reserve that. I just have a point of inquiry. Is this to initiate the project within eighteen months or to complete the project within eighteen months?
Madam Speaker, if I made, the amendment that was made is that it to commence within three years, to begin. And that's why I'm saying three years to begin is quite generous. I think if we can start beginning within eighteen months, and conceivably it could take a year, two years to complete, then within three years, we will have a structure already. And that's the point. If this is as urgent as everybody says it is, then, and everything is in place except the land, and this is what we're doing today, or at least trying to enact into law, then we should at least start the construction within eighteen months. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Is there anyone else like to speak on the amendment? Senator Ada, on the Spalding amendment?
I just want to, well, I think I certainly echo the last speaker's sentiment. And I think it's, you know, the question seemed to be running through the minds of people in here as to what do we mean about commence? And if we take a look at, we take a look at the amendment that was just made, the additional provision in the resolve clause, it says, "If construction now does not commence," so I think one could make the argument that when we say construction, we're talking about, actually now, I mean, the design is already done, we've gotten the construction permits, and now we're breaking ground. The surveying of, and the property and all that has been done, all those preliminaries. Now we can commence construction. And I think that one can reasonably argue that then, when we use the term commence construction, we're talking about breaking ground. So I just wanted to add to that. And at least for the record, that what was intended here when we say commence construction, we mean all the preliminaries have already been done, now we're going to break ground and construct. Thank you.
On the amendment, is there anybody else to speak? Senator, would you like to close?
Just one last note, Madam Speaker. We all know that the First Lady has taken this project under her wing, and so it is a priority that she's been really pushing forward to have done. And I would imagine that when it comes to the permits, and when it comes to all the paperwork that needs to be done ahead of time, that that will definitely make, she will definitely make sure this gets done. So to break ground within eighteen months, I believe is definitely feasible, especially in light of they have the money. Money is always the biggest component. And again, with the First Lady spearheading this project, along with many other people in the community, I believe that eighteen months is reasonable just to break ground. That just means turn one shovel of dirt over, that's ground broken, Madam Speaker. So I still say, if we give them three years, then we, you know, we might see the old wealth, let's build it within six years, or let's make sure it gets done within six years. If this is as urgent as we all believe it to be, then let's break ground. Let's put a shovel in the ground by the eighteenth month. And if it does take another eighteen months to finish, then within three years, we will have a foster care home, just like everybody anticipates. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. There is an objection, so all in favor then of the amendment to, from three years to eighteen months, all raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen. The amendment carries. On the main motion, Senator Nicholas, you recognize?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, when this issue was first being discussed, I think it was several sessions ago, my main concern was that we were not doing a property exchange on a value-for-value basis. And that concern still stands. I think that as a matter of best practice, we should always strive to do value-for-value exchanges. I mean, it's just, it's good, it's good practice for the government and for the benefit of the people of Guam. I did have a good conversation, though, after that session, Madam Speaker, with a colleague of ours, and he helped me to put things into perspective. And I just wanted to, for the record, state that I've reconsidered that position. And while, again, it's good practice for us to always do value-for-value, this cause is one of those causes where we just kind of need to say, hey, you know, are we going to move this forward or not? Is this important for our community or not? And that conversation I had with one of our colleagues, I really reflected on it, reflect on it a lot, actually, as I do a lot of other conversations I have with everyone in this room. And I would like to see this project going. So I'd like to rise in full support of the resolution. With the, just with the reiteration, Madam Speaker, that it is best practice for us to do value-for-value exchanges always, whether it's for a really, really good cause, or for, you know, just trying to figure out easements or whatever. Value-for-value exchanges is just really, really good practice in the government, and we should stick with that practice as much as we, as much as we can. But, you know, this, this effort to get this facility together for our foster kids, I mean, I reflected on not only what my colleagues spoke to me about, but also with what I'm very much looking forward to, and that's the inclusion of our foster kids in the Government of Guam Health Insurance Plan that's being negotiated right now. I 'd like to thank everybody in this, in this hall for not only considering this resolution and what it's going to bring for our foster children, but for also their support that they offered on that previous initiative to get our foster kids on the Government of Guam Health Insurance Plan. This demographic is a demographic that we as elected leaders are responsible for taking care of. The foster children are our children. We're the parents so long as they are wards of the state. And are we going to build our kids a house? I think we should. Are we going to put them under our health insurance? I think we should. And are we going to consider other ways in the future to further enhance their quality of life and respect to their experiences? We absolutely should. So I'd like to thank the author of this resolution for her persistence. She's been very passionate about this issue. I would also like to thank the First Lady for her persistence. She has also been very passionate about this issue. And I would like to thank my colleagues for their consideration of this resolution as something that would be very good for the children who are the wards of the state and therefore our children. Let's build them a house, and let's make it a nice one. And let's make sure that if there is any danger on the cliff line, we mitigate that properly in the architectural engineering specifications that we adopt. But going forward also, let's make sure that, you know, if we're going to do any land exchanges, we try to stick as firmly as possible to value-for-value. That is good practice for our government. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. Does anyone like to speak on the main motion? Senator Munia Barnes, would you like to close?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Just want to thank my colleagues who spoke on the measure, made their amendments, so that we can be assured that this home will be built for our foster children. I also want to take the time, Madam Speaker, to just give a big thank you to one of the advocates who's been taking care of children. She said she's not a mother, a biological mother, but she's a mother to a lot of students and to a lot of children. And I'd be remiss if I didn't just recognize her, because I know she said she took, after so many years, she took a break. And even after taking a break, she's still in the forefront of taking care of children, especially foster children, and that sister Bridgette Paris. So I want to thank her. And I also want to add, if I may, Senator Mike Nicholas as co-sponsor to the resolution.
On the, and if I can put this down on third reading. Senator Nicholas, no objections? So ordered. Announcing motion to send Resolution 21-33 to the third reading file without any objections. So ordered. Senator Rodriguez is not here. Senator Munia Barnes, on bill number 14-33.
Madam Speaker, if I may, if I'd like to move number, bill number 14-33 COR is substituted by the Committee on U.S. Military Relocation, Public Safety, and Judiciary to third reading. And if I can speak briefly on it, Madam Speaker?
You may proceed.
See to this, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, bill 14-33 COR seeks to allow the judges in our judiciary the freedom to tailor the punishment to the facts of the case which would be before them. It is common sense that while mandatory minimum sentences may be appropriate in many, many cases, they are certainly not so in every single case, especially those cases involving nonviolent offenders. So bill 14-33 seeks to allow judges the greater flexibility in sentencing when it is warranted. I'd like to note for the record that our existing prison facilities are overcrowded, and the space there should be reserved for truly violent offenders or those who demonstrate a refusal to be rehabilitated. I want to note that this bill does not apply to violent offenders or repeat offenders. Judges, Madam Speaker, are in the best position to make determinations of what appropriate sentences should be given, the fact of specific cases in front of them. This bill seeks to avoid situations where mandatory minimum sentences would be cruel and unusual punishment given the specific facts of a case that's presented to them. In other words, it is the intent of this bill not to require Guam judges to impose shorter sentences, but rather only to authorize them to depart below a statutory mandatory minimum sentence after finding, among other things, that providing a particular defendant a shorter sentence will not jeopardize public safety. Put plainly, in cases where the mandatory minimum does not account for the offender's limited role in a crime or other relevant factors, judges would be allowed to consider those factors and narrowly tailor more appropriate sentence in such cases. Madam Speaker, this bill was introduced last term, and it went through the public hearing process, and introduced it this term again. It was one of those bills that fell through the cracks. And I just know that being able to give the opportunity for the judges to have this alternative will be the right thing to do. So I ask that my colleagues humbly look at this bill and give it fair consideration and support the efforts. I know that, speaking to several judges on the, in the judiciary, they've shared that this would be a good bill for them to be authorized, that authority, when needed. But more importantly, having spoke to the Director of the Public Defender's Office, he too shared that sometimes we impose minimum mandatory sentencing without looking at the overall picture. And this would be a good start in helping at least give those considerations on circumstances where it's needed. So, and again, does not, this doesn't, is not for violent offenders or repeat offenders. So thank you for giving me this opportunity, and I appreciate the time.
You're welcome. On the motion, Senator Nicholas, and then Senator Spalding.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Just for context, bill number 14-33 seeks to create exceptions for mandatory minimum sentencing. And, you know, I look at this very, very closely because we have those mandatory minimums in the code for a reason. And one of the things that kind of jumps out at me that I would like for us to amend has to do with page three, lines 12 and 13. And if I may just read that whole section there and then go into the amendment that I'm going to proffer, that is section two of subsection 80 dot 39 dot one. And it reads, "That mandatory minimum sentencing, sentences, the court may depart from the minimum sentence if it does not," and then it goes into say, "involve any sexual contact offense by the defendant against a minor, other than an offense involving sexual conduct where the victim was at least 16 years old, and the offender was not more than four years older than the victim, and the sexual conduct was consensual." My concern there on page three has to do specifically with line 12. I think that I would like to, I would like for us to consider striking the word "contact" because, you know, there's all different kinds of sexual offenses that might not necessarily directly involve physical contact or any kind of actual contact. So if we can just strike the word "contact," I may be, I may be more comfortable with that particular section. So that would be my, Madam Speaker, I'd like to proffer, just to strike the word "contact" on page three, line 12.
On, there is an amendment on page three, line 12, to delete the word "contact." Is there anyone who would like to speak on the amendment? Are there any objections to the amendment? There being none, then the word "contact" is deleted. Senator, you still have the floor?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So now that section says, "Any sexual offense by the defendant against a minor shall not have the minimum mandatory sentence waived." And that's, that's something I think that can be a lot, I'm a lot more comfortable with. I did have a question, I guess, I'd like to pose to the author of the bill on page three, line 23. And it has to do with substantial injustice to the defendant. And so it says that the court may depart from the applicable mandatory minimum sentence if the court finds, you know, enough reasons to believe that doing so would, that not doing so would cause a substantial injustice to the defendant. So I'd just like to try and understand exactly what, like how a minimum sentence of a crime may cause a substantial injustice to a defendant.
Senator, yes, the author's indicated to me, we've got to have a brief recess specific to that question. So we are going to have a brief recess.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The legislature's back in session. Senators Nicholas, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So, in, in just in conversations, it was just made very, very clear that what subsection B and this subsection one is intending to do is, it gives the judges the ability to, within certain parameters, determine if there's going to be a substantial injustice to the defendant. So, in subsection B here, those parameters are that the court must find substantial and compelling reasons on the record that, in giving due regard to the nature of the crime, the history and character of the defendant, and his or her chances of successful rehabilitation, then the judges will decide, okay, you know what, does this minimum mandatory sentence actually cause a substantial injustice given the nature of the, of the offense? And an example could be, you know, somebody who's very, very elderly, who happens to be living in a residence where a controlled substance is also found. And that elderly person, because of the size or volume of controlled substance that might be there, that might not even be directly related to that elderly person, may have a sentence imposed on them that's a mandatory minimum sentence. And, you know, to have somebody be locked up in the system who's very, very elderly, who really is a victim of circumstance, but who has no other way out in terms of sentencing because the mandatory minimums are there, even the, the wisdom of our judges is unable to come into play at that point. And so, what this section one does then is it does allow, within those narrow parameters, for our judges to be able to say, you know what, given all those circumstances, the character, nature of the defendant, their history, their criminal record or lack thereof, and the nature of the crime, the judges are able to have that, that, that leeway to be able to make those kind of judgments. So, at this time, I'll go ahead and be, I'll go ahead and yield. I would like to hear what some of my other colleagues have to say. But I do want it to be clear on the record that I do fully respect the, the jurisdiction of our judges and their wisdom with respect to adjudicating our, our cases. And that, and, and the fact that that also needs to be balanced against the, the stated will of the community with respect to minimum, minimum mandatory sentences. So, this bill is going to try and find a further middle ground between the two. And I thank the author for, for her effort in making that happen. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. On the motion, Senator McCready. Yes, Senator Spalding, cancel.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I kind of have the same sentiments as the last speaker. I want to listen to what the, the body has to say. For now, I'd like to just go over section, page three, line four, that's 80 39.1, the sentencing part. And I would like to just make a quick amendment when it comes to the language, and notwithstanding in the provision of the law, when sentencing a person convicted of a crime, rather than violation, because I think it stays uniform as we're talking about crimes. That'd be my first amendment, just to change the violation to crime.
On the amendment, I think Senator Spalding, that was your question. What it is, is the violation versus a crime. So, maybe we should hear from Senator Spalding first then.
Sure, okay. I'll yield to Senator Spalding.
Okay, but maybe that would answer some.
Take care of the motion.
Oh, okay then, all right.
So, my, I guess my motion would be to change the viol, the language of violation to crimes.
Okay. So, on that, on that amendment then, that in page three, line five, the word "violation," that he wants to replace "violation" with the word "crime." Senator Spalding, you recognize on that.
And, and line seven as well, Madam Speaker.
And line seven, okay. Senator Spalding, you recognize?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I actually stand in support of this amendment. And, and it was more because when you talk about a violation, in, in law, it's, it can be used as a term of art legally. In other, in other words, there are different levels of, of crimes that are committed or unlawful acts are committed. Some are deemed felonies, some are deemed misdemeanors, petty misdemeanors. And there is one that's deemed a violation and which really is the lowest form of a, of a offense against the law. And, for example, sometimes I think possession of marijuana under an ounce is only a violation. And the punishment for the violation is a citation, is a fine. So, if you change, if we change the word "violation" to crime, I think it'd be more fitting for what we're trying to do. First of all, we'll take the legal argument out of it, whether the crime committed was a violation or petty misdemeanor, or what, what does the law really mean. But more also to respect the term of art of that the violation is really a, a level of, of offense against the law. And so, I think if we just replace it with crime, I think that'd be more appropriate. So, I stand in, in support of the amendment. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
On the amendment, is anyone else who'd like to speak on the amendment? Mr. Vice Speaker, you canceled? Okay, so Senator McCready then, on his amendment, are there any objections to the amendment, which is on page three, lines five and seven, to delete the word "violation" and replace it with the word "crime"? No objections? So ordered. Senator McCready, you still have the floor?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would just like to clarify with the author, on line 12, page three, involve any sexual offense, it's, it's been, the contact part has been eliminated, by the defendant against a minor, other than an offense involving sexual contact where the victim was at least 16 years old and the offender was not more than four years older. I, I know this addresses the minor issue, but my concern would be, shouldn't we have a, a sexual offense, period? Just sexual offense? I mean... So, can, yeah, please.
Brief recess. The legislature's back in session. Senator McCready, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I have a few questions I would like to yield. First of all, the committee report, and for full disclosure, everyone knows here that I'm the, try to be the toughest guy on crime. So, I, this is kind of, at the, at the same time, I want to make sure that our judges are given the, the discretion to make the decision because they are the experts. But when you read the committee report, and the judiciary Guam committee report, it does state that while they don't put a support or an objection, they do say they, they do not object to any legislation that provides the judges. And then on the third paragraph, they have some concerns regarding the draft of the bill. So, my first question was, did we address those concerns from the judiciary?
Yes.
Senator, do you yield to the question?
Yes, we did.
Yes?
Is it yes? And my second, my second question, Madam Speaker, is with crime being so high, and we're, we are, we are extremely short on police officers and resources when it comes to preventing crime, is this a model piece of legislation that has worked in other states with the same type of municipality numbers that, that Guam has? Because right now, what, what I'm seeing in this bill is, is we're kind of taking a, a detour from being tough on crime. And so, does this work in other states?
Senator, do you yield to the question?
Madam Speaker, the short answer is yes. It, there is, there are provisions in other jurisdictions in the nation that, a lot of jurisdictions that have this model legislation.
And our resident Chief Justice here wants to respond. You're recognized, Mr. Vice Speaker.
I just want to rise and say, Madam Speaker, that I have to admit that I voted incorrectly on the voting sheet. As you may know, and the body may know, I am always looking out for giving judges as much power as possible. And I misread this, thinking it was going to give it broad, give the judges broad authority for all crimes to be able to address and be able to decide not to go with mandatory minimum, which I would support. I think for everybody to understand this bill, this bill is simply a Romeo and Juliet bill. I didn't realize it when I signed off on it. I just thought we were giving the judges the authority to be able to depart from the mandatory minimum requirements when certain things happen. Now, as I look at it, I realize the only time that they're giving judges the authority to depart from the mandatory minimum is for Romeo and Juliet offenses. And I have always been concerned and opposed to changes in the Romeo and Juliet laws. I'm not for mandatory minimums in them, but I really do think that as a society with the high birth rate, the highest birth rate for unmarried teenagers is here. And for us in this bill to say, well, you know, it was consensual, you were more than 16, I just wanted to rise and say, this is a Romeo and Juliet bill. And I marked my vote on the, on the voting sheet incorrectly. It should have been to not pass.
Senator McCready, was the Senator able to answer your question?
Yeah, well, that, I mean, he's the expert and, and, and I am not. I hate to do this to my sister. to my sister, Senator Munia Barnes, but can I make a quick motion?
I'm sorry, to do what?
Send it back to committee? I don't, I really, with that answer right there, coming from the Chief Justice, and you said it, Madam yourself, that he's the Chief Justice in here, we cannot rush this. We, I mean, this is, I don't like to do this, I've never done it before, but this is a crime bill, Madam Speaker, that we are not certain in this, this body right now, that this is the right thing to do. And we just heard from the legal expert in here, that even himself voted in the committee voting sheet to pass. And if he's confused, can you imagine the rest of us? So, I, I think for the betterment of the community, and maybe we can get more input from the judiciary, the Police Department, and some, some better data on where this works, I think we should send it back to committee. That would be the most responsible thing to do, Madam Speaker. When, this is dealing with crime.
So, there, okay.
Madam Speaker, if I may, if we can just move to set this bill aside, and not take it off the session agenda, so that I could address the concerns and seeing what we could do to rectify. If there's additional provisions that need to be added, then I'll have it. And that can, that can be doable, please.
I understand that, but there's a motion already, and I have to...
Then object to the motion, and then ask to be just put aside.
So, there is an objection to your motion, to send it back to committee. Is there anybody who wants to speak on that particular motion? There, okay. On the motion now to send back to the committee, that's what it is. Senator Sinikles?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Speaker. Just to clarify then, so we're going to send this back to committee, because, why exactly? I'm just, I'm just curious. What are we going to, what are we trying to accomplish in committee?
Senator, can you elaborate as to why they want to make that motion?
I mean, it's pretty simple. If you look at, if you look at the committee report, it's entirely to report out one to pass. That, that pass was the former Chief Justice who stood up and he said he made a mistake, and he would vote not to pass. We've heard from previous speakers, who said they would like to listen to what the body says. We all, evidently not everyone in this body has a complete grasp of the implications that the language in this bill has. And so, I mean, it, it's to, to be a more responsible bill, we don't, we don't know what we're doing right now. None of us are crime experts. None of, I mean, we only have two, two lawyers in here.
Okay, so Senator, was that both hands?
So, that's, I mean, that's right. We're making an uneducated decision right now.
Okay.
And the best thing we can do is send it back to committee.
Okay, so Senator Sinikles, that he gave you his reason as to why he made that motion?
That's fine. I'm just trying to understand, though, I mean, because for me, I don't really have any issues with it going back to committee, but when it does go back to committee, what are, what are we looking for to be done in the committee or with the committee with respect to the bill? Are we looking to have a roundtable to further discuss the bill?
That, that we don't know until, when it goes back to the committee, the committee that reported out then would have to make that decision.
No, but I'm inquiring as the mover of the, the one making the motion, because that way, when it comes to voting, whether or not to move back to committee, I can understand the direction that he's trying to take, take things. I mean, I would like to know what the resolution or lack thereof would be for, for the bill. That he's, that he would like to see achieved in committee. I don't have any problem, Madam Speaker, moving it back to committee, but I'm just, just so that we know where it's going to go from there.
Madam Speaker, it's simple to get more input from the stakeholders and the experts. Simple. And if the committee chair would like to substitute after he got that information, then I think we should be afforded that opportunity to, to, either, either that or we call committee as a whole. I mean...
No, but this is not an appropriation.
Okay, so, but, I mean, we're not informed. We don't know.
So, and so we are on the motion anyway, and in discussing the motion, there is an objection. Senator Sinikles has the floor, is asking, wanting to get clarification in terms of your intent. Senator Sinikles, you still have the floor, and then I do have others. Senator Torres also would like to speak on the motion. So, if you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, notwithstanding, you know, for one, it takes a great deal of maturity for, for the, one of the retiring speakers to stand up and say he, he voted erroneously on the committee report. Oftentimes, we don't make those, we don't come out clearly and, and say that. But for me, I'm not having too difficult a time understanding the bill. The way I read it, the Section A basically is a general statement saying that certain things will allow for the minimum mandatory sentencing to be reconsidered. And then, Section, subsection A 1 and 2 specifically speak towards what may not, what may not be considered outside of the realm of minimum, minimum mandatory sentencing. So, subsection 1, you may not consider anything that involved force or the use of force. In section 2, you may not consider anything that had a sexual offense against a minor, with the exception of certain individuals who are between the ages of 16 to 20. So, those two things, you may not in any way reconsider the minimum mandatory sentence. In section B, it says, if you are going to reconsider the minimum mandatory sentence, these are the parameters within which you can consider that, and these are the reasons why you can consider it. And so, I disagree with one of the retiring speakers that says that this is a Romeo and Juliet bill. I really don't see that. What I see is a bill here that's going to allow our judges to be able to exercise judicial discretion with respect to minimum mandatory sentencing, but to give them limitations as to how they may exercise that discretion. So, for example, one of the limitations is if that, if the person who's being sentenced threatened the use of physical force, or used physical force, or attempted to use physical force against another person, you cannot alter the minimum sentence on that. If the person committed any sexual offense against a minor, you cannot alter the minimum sentence on that. I mean, that's very clear. If they're between the ages of 16 to 20, and they had consensual sex, you may reconsider the minimum, the minimum sentence on that. But if you're going to reconsider that minimum sentence, or any other minimum sentence, it must be under a certain set of limitations. One of those limitations is that the court must find substantial and compelling reasons that due to the regard and nature of the crime, the history and character of the defendant, and their chances of successful rehabilitation, imposing the minimum mandatory sentence would actually be an injustice. That's one, one limitation. And the second one is, the mandatory minimum sentence is not necessary for the protection of the public. So, if the court says, hey, you know what, yeah, sending you to jail for 15 years because you're 85, and there was drugs found in your house that weren't even yours, that might not necessarily be reasonable. So, we're going to go ahead and alter that minimum mandatory sentence. You're not a danger to the public, and it would be a substantial injustice to you, given the, the nature and the circumstances of the crime, and the fact that you have no prior criminal record, and the fact that you are an upstanding citizen of good character. I mean, those are the kind of things that we hire judges for, Madam Speaker. That's why we have judges in the system to be able to make those kind of determinations. So, while the retiring, one of the retiring speakers stated that this is a Romeo and Juliet bill, I don't see that at all. I see that it does take into consideration some Romeo and Juliet circumstances, but it's not a, it's not an end-all, be-all Romeo and Juliet bill. It actually speaks to the greater question of, are we going to allow our judges to exercise their judicial, judicial discretion with respect to whether or not minimum mandatory sentences are either, one, a substantial injustice, or, two, necessary for the protection of the public? In all cases, not just limited to consensual sex with individuals between the ages of 16 and 20. So, I, I really find this bill to be pretty clear. I think the greater question we need to ask ourselves as policymakers is, are we comfortable with giving our judges the ability to be able to make those determinations within these narrow set of circumstances? And I, so far, listening to the dialogue, I can, I can be pretty comfortable with that. I think that this kind of gives the judicial discretion to our judges in a manner that is trying to strike that balance between, of course, letting them do their jobs as judges, and doing our jobs at sending a minimum standard within the community. If one of the retiring speakers is concerned about whether or not we should be having any sexual conduct at all between individuals age 16 and up, that's something that we can definitely discuss. And maybe we can even strike that section entirely from the bill if it's going to get in the way of everything else. But even if we struck out that entire section 2 there, or the parts provisioning with respect to the 16 years of age and the consensual sex charges that they may face, we, we should not retreat, I don't think, Madam Speaker, from the idea that our judges need to be able to weigh carefully whether or not minimum sentencing should apply in a particular circumstance, given a narrow set of parameters. I'm ready to continue discussing that, this issue, Madam Speaker, and to continue debating on it. And if an objection, if an objection has already been rendered with respect to moving it back to committee, I would support that, only because while the retiring speaker may not understand what the bill is about, I clearly understand what the bill is about. And I'm ready to move forward. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Welcome. On the motion then to send back to committee, Senator Torres, you're recognized.
Speaker, I just wanted a point of clarification from the author of the bill. As I look at Title IX, Guam Code annotated, Chapter 80 is the chapter that deals with the disposition of offenders.
I just want to make sure that, because we're not, we're not now discussing anything about the bill, but more the motion now to try to send it back, so...
I'm getting there. I'm trying to frame the question.
Okay.
So, what I wanted to, to ask now, I've heard two speakers. I've heard the proffer of the amendment that it be sent back, the proffer of the motion that it be sent back to committee, and I heard someone, retiring speaker speak in support of having the bill press on. But I just, what I want to impress is it, it isn't so clear that this is truly a justice safety valve act, a comprehensive valve. While one part of the language on, on Part A of proposed Section 80.39.1 suggests that, that notwithstanding any other provisions of law, when a sentence, when sentencing a person convicted of a crime for which there is a mandatory minimum sentence, the court may depart from the applicable mandatory minimum sentence. It implies then that, that this, that this bill does in fact allow judges to have discretion in all matters, although we, it specifically gives exceptions to what is, could be a Romeo and Juliet. I think that, that if in fact the, if in fact the, the author can, can, can provide us ample, ample, I'm sorry, I'm lost for words. If the, if the author can, can assure us that in fact this, this bill does satisfy the purview of a justice safety valve act, then, then I would be opposed to sending it back to committee. However, if it, if it does appear to be a bill that looks specifically at Romeo and Juliet issues, then I think that it must go back to committee. But I would request then that that be, that the, the author do clarify that. If it is encompassing, it is not so clear, other than from that one section on Page 3, Line 4, it is not so clear, and I would like further assurances.
Senator, do you yield to the question? Okay, this is what we're going to do. And we're going to take a recess, so I think all of you can decide the fate of this bill. the children really got it made, because they know exactly what recess is all about. And I'm glad that we actually did just that, so we can, you know, discuss this further. And I think we might have a resolution with Senator McCready, who I know originally proffered that motion to send it back to committee. So I'm going back to you now as the mover of that motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And after discussion with the body and my Democrat friends on the left, we have, and my Republican friends as well, we have come to a compromise and a common sense compromise as well. So I will withdraw my motion if the...
One moment first, just to, we'll do that first and then...
Okay, so I withdraw my...
So you're gonna withdraw your motion then to send back to the committee. There being no objections, so ordered. Now, Senator, you still have the floor.
And then I would just like to strike out Section 1 and 2 on Page Three, Line 8 through 16.
On the amendment then to delete from Lines 8 to 16 of Page Three, any objections? No objections, so ordered. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Point of order, Madam Speaker.
Please state your point of order.
Just with respect to this amendment that has passed by the body, I do believe that on Page Three, Lines 6 and 7, we may want to consider legal counsel putting a period after the word "sentence."
So, legal counsel, there's an amendment requesting that legal counsel then, you know, do make the technical correction in terms of the sentence of 4 to 7. Is that, do you understand, legal counsel? Is that a yes?
Or we may strike Section A entirely also, Madam Speaker.
Okay, so the suggestion says go ahead and take the A out, because it's covered in B.
Right.
So do you want to make that motion then?
Sure, Madam Speaker. Motion to strike Section A, Lines 4 through 7.
Okay, on that amendment then, to strike on Page Three, Lines 4 to 7, which is subsection A, no objections, so ordered. Thank you very much, Senator.
And then just technical amendment, that Section B becomes the new Section A.
Yes, yes, and that's an earlier amendment, which legal counsel would make those technical corrections then. Thank you. Okay, so on the, we're back now to the main motion. No, no, we're back to the main motion, and Senator McCready, if you've spoken...
Madam Speaker, if I may, so just a point of inquiry on Page Three. Senator San Nicholas moved to delete Chapter...
No, just the subsection A.
Because it's discussed in Section B.
That's from legal counsel. Yes.
Yes, she'll put that not...
Yes, that's what we're saying.
Okay. So, so, so...
So legal counsel will take it.
Notwithstanding provision will still be there.
Yes.
I just want to make sure.
Yes, she will. I got that from her, that's, yes. Yes, it will be. The language from legal counsel is that for B, which will be renumbered, of course, will have, notwithstanding any other provision of law, then, and so on. She will take care, legal counsel, make sure.
Yes, I just wanted to make sure. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator, you're welcome. On the motion, I have Mr. Vice Speaker, a counsel, okay, Senator Tom Ada, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just have a question about, on Page Four, on this new Section 80.39.4 reinvestment, and it reads, "Twenty-five percent of the savings realized as a result of this act shall revert to the general fund to advance evidence-based practices shown to reduce recidivism." And I think I can understand what this section is saying, is that if the minimum mandatory, let's say, is, you know, imprisonment for three years, and a judge decides to put the person in prison for just a one year, then I guess the savings would be the two years that we otherwise would not have to house and feed and take care of that individual, however much that costs. I think it was estimated about $35,000 a year. So that would be a savings of about $70,000 then. So my question is then, and if the author would yield to help me understand, is where is that $70,000 gonna come from? Do we then go into the Department of Corrections budget and say, because this individual here received the minimum, did not receive that minimum three years, he only got one year, we're gonna deduct $70,000 from your budget, and that's gonna go back to the general fund? Or do we, you know, do we... So, I mean, that's probably the simplest example. So how is this gonna work, this reinvestment?
Okay, Senator, do you hear to the question?
Yeah, I kind of, Madam Speaker, if I may, I can understand where the good Senator from Manila is coming from, and I too would tend to agree with him, but maybe we should move to delete that section.
All right.
Because it would be coming from the source that would pay for it, and that would be the Department of Corrections.
Okay. So Senator Ada, she's giving you the...
Fine, thank you, Madam Speaker. So then I would move to delete on Page Four, Lines 13 through 15.
On that motion then to delete on Page Four, Lines 13 to 15, on the reinvestment section, no objections, so ordered. Thank you very much. Senator, you still have the floor, is there anything else? You're done? Okay, on the main motion, for those who have not spoken, is there anybody else who would like to speak? On the motion then to send Bill 14-33, oh, okay, Senator...
I move to put Senator Mary Torres...
Senator Torres, Senator San Nicholas as co-sponsors, no objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker?
Yes, Senator?
Just part of information, now that we've deleted the, on Page Three, Lines 4 to 16, and I know that we gave authority for legal counsel to reword Line 17 and all the rest, I would like to understand what it's gonna read.
What it is, is that, no, what it is, is that, and that's the question that was brought up, is to, on, for Lines 17, was to add, to continue to add the words, notwithstanding any other provision of the law, then it will continue on to make that fit subsection B.
Notwithstanding any provision of law, so you delete in addition to...
The court may.
The court may depart from the applicable mandatory minimum sentence.
Notwithstanding any other provision of the law, the court may, in addition to, no, I'm sorry, to take away in addition to, that, yeah, the court may depart from, just continue reading it.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I understand and I appreciate that. However, I also have a problem with the words on Lines 18 and 19, and again, it deals with term of art in law. So now it reads, notwithstanding any other provision of law, the court may depart from the applicable minimum, mandatory minimum sentence if the court finds substantial and compelling reasons on the record, that in giving due regard, etc., etc., etc. My, I guess my issue is that the word compelling is also a term of art in law, and it deals with standards of review. And when you deal with compelling, when you use the word compelling, that is the strictest and the highest form of review. And so I can see where arguments will be made in court to the judge, who may be given all this discretion supposedly, and yet really has none, if the lawyer can successfully argue that it was not compelling. And so that word in itself is problematic, I think, in that, again, once you get into a courtroom, the arguments will be made that the minimum sentence should be imposed, so the judge has no discretion, because the nature, because it's not compelling enough of a reason, right? And again, so we either define compelling or we remove it from this, because if the intent is to give the court more discretion, then let's give them the discretion, without having the lawyers argue of whether the reasons for departing from the minimum sentence is compelling, and whether it's really compelling as defined in Merriam-Diccionary, Webster Dictionary, or whether it's compelling as a term of art in court. And again, that's not clear here.
So are you making an amendment then?
I would have to, but I'm not sure, again, maybe we leave it to, but I would like to delete that, because if we're giving the court the discretion, the court may depart from the applicable minimum, mandatory minimum sentence if the court finds substantial compelling reasons on the record. I'm not, I mean, I'd like to strike the word substantial and compelling reasons, for some reason.
Okay, so...
Because if we're giving them discretion, I would, you know, again, with the responsibilities that judges have, they will use their best judgment.
Okay, so then you're saying then the sentence, if that is the case, then it would read, notwithstanding any other provision of law, the court may depart from the applicable mandatory minimum sentence if the court finds substantial compelling reasons on the record, that in giving due regard, etc., etc., etc.
My, I guess my issue is that the word compelling is also a term of art in law, and it deals with standards of review. And when you deal with compelling, when you use the word compelling, that is the strictest and the highest form of review. And so I can see where arguments will be made in court to the judge, who may be given all this discretion supposedly, and yet really has none, if the lawyer can successfully argue that it was not compelling. And so that word in itself is problematic, I think, in that, again, once you get into a courtroom, the arguments will be made that the minimum sentence should be imposed, so the judge has no discretion, because the nature, because it's not compelling enough of a reason, right? And again, so we either define compelling or we remove it from this, because if the intent is to give the court more discretion, then let's give them the discretion, without having the lawyers argue of whether the reasons for departing from the minimum sentence is compelling, and whether it's really compelling as defined in Merriam-Diccionary, Webster Dictionary, or whether it's compelling as a term of art in court. And again, that's not clear here.
So are you making an amendment then?
I would have to, but I'm not sure, again, maybe we leave it to, but I would like to delete that, because if we're giving the court the discretion, the court may depart from the applicable minimum, mandatory minimum sentence, if the court finds substantial compelling reasons on the record. I'm not, I mean, I'd like to strike the word substantial and compelling reasons, for some reason.
Okay, so...
Because if we're giving them discretion, I would, you know, again, with the responsibilities that judges have, they will use their best judgment.
Okay, so then you're saying then the sentence, if that is the case, then it would read, notwithstanding any other provision of law, the court may depart from the applicable mandatory minimum sentence if the court finds, on the record, that...
On the record, that in giving due regard, etc., etc., etc. Yes, maybe if we do that, on the record that, so we will delete...
So including, on the record that, from substantial compelling reasons, on the record that, to delete...
If the court finds, on the record, yes, so delete substantial and compelling reasons. That would be my motion, Madam Speaker.
To delete substantial and compelling reasons.
Reasons.
Reasons. Can you read then how that would sound?
Applicable mandatory minimum, say, if the court finds on the record, that in giving due regard to the nature of the crime, the history and character of the defendant, I believe this should be the facts of the case, because it seems like that's not included in there, and his or hers chances, but since we're dealing with this amendment to delete, it seems to be okay. Applicable minimum sentence, if the court finds that, in giving due regard to the nature of the crime, the history and character of the defendant, and his or hers chances, I believe that would be grammatically correct.
Okay, so the amendment then is, everyone, on Page Three, Lines 18 and 19, to delete the words substantial and compelling reasons. On the amendment, Senator Torres. Senator Torres objects to the deletion of substantial and compelling reasons. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on the amendment to delete? There is an objection, Senator Espada, there is an objection to your amendment, so I'm gonna have to call for the vote. So all in favor of the amendment to delete substantial and compelling reasons, please, raise your hand. Sorry, it failed. Okay, so it stays, so we're back on the main motion. Is anybody else, Senator...
No, I just want to thank you, Madam Speaker, thank you.
Thank you. So now to send, anybody else one more time to speak before I send it down? All right, Bill to send, I did, yes, Torres and San Nicholas, on the motion then to send 14-33 to Third Reading Five, without any objections, so ordered. Thank you, Senators. Moving on to, Senator Frank Gagen, Bill Number 56.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Madam Speaker, and to our fellow colleagues, and to our people out there who are watching the legislative session. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move for the placement of Bill Number 56, S33COR, into Third Reading.
And you want to speak?
Yes, because I understand that some of our colleagues do have proposed amendments on this particular measure. Madam Speaker, just so that I can highlight, the title of this legislation is relative to recognizing the independence of the judiciary of Guam relative to the receipt of federal funds. And the legislative intent is, unless lihatur in Guam hereby extends the recognition of judicial independence to the application, receipt, and administration of federal funds. I wanted to highlight those two components, Madam Speaker, because I believe that this legislation is self-explanatory. But looking at exclusions and exceptions that have already been applied in our government of Guam, already there's a provision that exempts the Guam Community College, the University of Guam, and the Guam Department of Education from final approval of the Director of the Guam State Clearing House whenever federal funds are being applied for or pursued. So, Madam Speaker, this is includes, including the, or adding the judiciary of Guam as one of those particular entities that would be excluded from this requirement. But in the same token, there have been concerns, and I want to thank the State Clearing House Director for appearing before the committee in regards to providing testimony in this legislation, Madam Speaker, albeit she opposed it, she came in and she provided some clarification in terms of the process that the judiciary has been actively involved in, working with the Guam State Clearing House. And I want to thank the Chairman, Vice Speaker Cruz, in regards to the line of questions that he asked, because there was one that stood out very clearly in my mind, and that is, in the last four years, or in the last three years, that you have held the helm as Director of the Guam State Clearing House, has there been any issues, any problems or concerns with regards to the judiciary of Guam and their applications for federal funds through this Guam State Clearing House? And the response was very clear, that in fact there was absolutely none, no problems and no issues. What would this legislation do? It would extract or provide an exemption to the judiciary of Guam, so that in fact they can pursue federal grants directly from the judiciary and through agencies such as the U.S. Department of Justice, and be able to acquire those funds as needed to be able to support their operation. And it appears simple in nature, Madam Speaker, I know that there's some discussion that is impending in regards to proposing amendments, so I would like to listen very intently to some of those amendments, and I want to thank a number of our colleagues who are gonna proffer those amendments for considering some of the issues and concerns that I brought to their attention. But, Madam Speaker, I ask for the consideration of this body to support this legislation, to recognize a co-equal branch of government, to provide that exemption, so that in fact they can pursue federal grants, and certainly continue to address the operational requirements of our third co-equal branch of government. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. On the motion, Senator Espada.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, I didn't raise my hand, but I'll take the spot anyway.
Well, because you have an amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Actually, the author and the Chairman of the Committee was correct in that, you know, first of all, I do support the recognition, the further recognition of the independence of another branch of government, which is the judicial branch. However, we all know, or some of us at least know, that there were concerns by the State Clearing House, who handles perhaps most, if not all, of the government grants, federal grants that come in, that in this bill, if we follow this process, that they would be left out of the loop on some of the monies that may be coming in. And so I proffer this amendment, this First Amendment, and that's to add a new Item G, which in essence would basically provide the State Clearing House, for any grants that the court, well, Guam Community College, the judiciary, the University of Guam, and the Guam Department of Education, they shall provide the State Clearing House with a courtesy copy, so that the State Clearing House will at least be knowledgeable of what grants are coming in, in this case, for the courts, so they will be informed, and they could at least track what kind of monies will be going into that branch of government. But it's more of a courtesy copy, it does not give the Clearing House the authority to approve the grant, or, you know, but basically just to be able to see it, to acknowledge it, and know that it's in the system. And that's my First Amendment, Madam Speaker.
Senator, before you sit, I do have two amendments from you, which one are we using?
The first one will be, a new Item G is added to 2101.1.
Okay, so that, all right, so that's what we're addressing right now.
Yes, ma'am. And the Second Amendment is actually the same line, same thing, except it goes in a different part.
In a different section. On the amendment?
The other senator.
Senator Ada. I didn't know you changed your name to Ada.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I certainly rise in support of the amendment. However, I would like to make an amendment to the amendment, because in the third line there, it says that the, a written copy of each grant application shall be provided to the Guam State Clearing House for its review and information. And just the term "review" seems to suggest that I'm going to receive it, I'm going to look at it, and then I'm going to have some kind of disposition. So I would just suggest that maybe we make the amendment so that it reads, a copy should be given to the State Clearing House for its information.
So delete the word "review" and...
Remove the words "review" and, correct.
Okay. For its information. So it would read "for its information" by deleting "review" and.
Correct.
So the, okay, so the amendment, then, to the amendment, no objection? So ordered. Thank you very much, Senator, Senator Uggan, on the amendment? Oh, okay. All right, wonderful, thank you. Okay, so on the amendment, then, of the new item G from Senator Espaldón, is there any objection? No objection? So ordered. Senator, on your Second Amendment?
On the Second Amendment, in essence, it's the same thing, and in fact, I'll go ahead and make that amendment to this amendment. Basically, it's a new item...
Yeah.
Oh, okay. A new item, right, just to a different section, which is section twenty-one oh one point three. And if I may go ahead and amend my amendment, we will strike the word, again, that was proffered earlier, and that's for review.
Okay, for its, you're right, information.
Guam Clearing House for its information. So we strike the words "review" and, and in essence, it does the same thing, Madam Speaker, allows a copy of all the grant applications to be provided to the Clearing House on a courtesy basis, so they will always be aware of what grant applications are being put out there.
And, you know, Senator, I know that with, no one's recognized this, but I think for both of them, we've always asked that copies always, as a general rule, also be sent to the legislature?
And if we can include that someplace, I have no objection if...
But can you go ahead and say it so that it...
And yes, and in fact, you're right, Madam Speaker, there is no mention that a copy should be provided to the legislature, and we really should, because when it comes to budgeting purposes, at least we can, we will know how much money these entities have and for what purposes, and we can budget accordingly. So if we could add, if we could allow the legal counsel to add, that the copies be provided to the legislature also, I move for that, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On that amendment, objections are ordered. And then the main amendment, that is also proffering, which is on section twenty-one oh one point three, any objections? No objections? So ordered. Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
On the main motion, is there anybody else who would like to speak on Bill fifty-six, dash thirty-three? Senator Morrison, you're recognized.
There you go.
Send it back to the committee. Clean up here, clean up here.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I, Madam Speaker, I certainly rise in support of this measure. However, I like, if the author could answer a question, because I'm concerned of some of these grants that come in through the judiciary that require the intergovernmental review, how would that now work, given the fact that the Guam State Clearing House is mandated to carry out the intergovernmental review? So unless, unless many of these grants don't require that, but it's my understanding that some of these grants may require the intergovernmental review.
You yield.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, and thank you, Senator, for that question, because that was one of the issues that was, or an issue that was brought up during the course of the public hearing. And I didn't clarify this at the inception of discussing this measure, but, and I also wrote down my notes here, and I need to clarify that any grants requiring state consideration, when I say, refer to state consideration, requiring that the Governor of Guam approve, consent, and sign off on that particular grant, will still follow that existing process or that process that exists today. So I just need to clarify that this does not take away from any direct requirement in certain grants that state, that the state governor has to be inclusive in the process, and in this case, the judiciary will still have to work the similar process that it does today, and get the governor's signature, and go through the State Clearing House for a final submission to the granting agency. Thank you, Senator.
Mr. Speaker, he answered my question.
Thank you.
And, but I also want to note, Madam Speaker, that, you know, what I also want to caution, you know, I was kind of concerned in the beginning when this was all starting off, because we, this is a small government, and the Guam State Clearing House, I believe, is still evolving, and my concern is, looking at, of course, we said, presidents, as you mentioned, Mr. Speaker, that there has been previous institutions that have been exempted from the State Clearing House process, and I just want to caution going forward, although I recognize the powers, or the recognition, the judiciary, I'm just concerned that going forward, that we, we don't open this up further to the State Clearing House's process. We all know that we, we believe in a fully functional Guam State Clearing House, that hopefully one day, we'll have a fully functional grants management office, housing many grants administrators, constantly going after grants and programs and opportunities that are out there, or federal opportunities that are out there for our island territory. So I just caution going forward that if any requests come forward, that we really look at this closely, given the fact that this is a very small government, and we have one Guam State Clearing House. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Smiles it is, maybe if they just focused on the executive, they might be better off. Any other one, Senator wished to be heard? Madam Speaker, did you have, wished to be recognized?
Yes, Mr. Vice, yes, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Speaker. I think maybe, I know everybody in here is so, so young and so new, but it was actually Speaker Ben, former Speaker Ben, who had introduced, you know, the legislation creating the State Clearing House, for many reasons, and one of the primary reasons, of course, that this was done is that in every department and agency, there are separate grant writers, and, and no one was actually speaking to each other, and there is also this concern is that some agencies were chasing after grants that would then eventually end up, because in the beginning, the monies were there, and it was like one hundred percent granting of the money, and then, as the years went by, it kept being reduced to the point then that they should be matched, and then eventually completely turned over to the government of Guam. And when that happened, departments and agencies started to come to the legislature now requesting that, because they have hired individuals under these grants, and that they've been working, and, you know, we don't want to let them go now, and therefore, we want the government to pick up the tab. So we want the government now to one hundred percent fund these positions and programs that, you know, were created. And granted, some of them are great programs, but that's a tendency, I think, of our government, is that the minute we see money out there, we're going to write a grant because we want the monies, and then we start creating and growing the government. And the purpose of that, then, with the State Clearing House, was to make sure that these departments and agencies don't continue to do that, that they kind of catch all of it, they'll be able to see what is going on, what are the monies that we're writing grants for, hence, of course, it being placed somewhere, and where then, you know, best to do this, to place that grants office, because at least by law, we all know, is that the governor is the governor, is the head, the executive head of the executive branch, and that the lieutenant governor is the keeper of the seal, and was charged with, on working on the beautification project. And this being an important function of the government, hence, of course, it being placed under the lieutenant governor's office, you know, giving the lieutenant governor duties by law, additional duties by law. So I, you know, and I think if, like you said, maybe if the focus is on, you know, on that, and really making sure that we do go for certain grants that maybe we've seen for a very long time, and that there is this partnership rather than an eventual takeover by the government, then that, you know, surely, you know, would be good. So the, the idea of separating out the judiciary, I understand and do support, because, yes, they are a separate branch, just as the legislature is a separate branch. And I would have to say, unlike you, who have admitted to some of the things that we've said or done in this particular case, and there's really no regret, is that, you know, the original language of where this bill is amending, where the three educational institutions that were separated out were for very good reasons as well, that, you know, we did this during my time. It was because there was this whole argument in terms of not wanting the legislature to meddle into the Department of Education's use and receipt of federal dollars, and for those, nobody will remember this name, but, but he's still with the U.S. Department of Education, Mr. Maestrey, where he didn't want us in the legislature to bring in DOE, to ask them about any federal grant monies that they have received, and how they were spending all the monies, and literally pull that federal office out of DOE and placed elsewhere to keep the legislature out from knowing what was going on. And so, and then the other two, for GCC and UOG, was that we didn't want to jeopardize the accreditation of these two institutions, hence, of course, now pulling them out as well, from not holding back on some of their grant applications that, until such time that they, they feel that they're ready to give the green light for them to proceed. So, you know, I can understand now where the route, of course, of doing this, and I have no objection, of course, to the judiciary branch being added on as an exception to then, you know, having to go through the Clearing House. My understanding as well from the author, and, and, you know, I'm glad that he shared it, is that it does not, of course, preclude that if a line agency in the executive branch is the primary grantee, although, and if they're partnering with everyone, and with any other, like the judiciary or the legislature, or even an autonomous agency, that whoever the primary grantee is, that then they would follow the process, hence, of course, I mean, because they fall within that line, as a line agency. So that, having been told that, you know, then, of course, I accept it, and I do support the bill. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. Any other Senator wished to be heard on the bill? There being none, I invite the sponsor to... On the motion to send the bill down to the voting file, there being no objection. Madam Speaker, I understand you have a bill.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I'd like to make a motion to place Bill fifty-eight dash thirty-three to the third reading file. I could just briefly discuss it.
Please.
Thank you very much again. Mr. Speaker, this bill was introduced last term, and it had passed, and there's been, you know, some changes. One of the things that several of our colleagues here would really appreciate was that we're always trying to find monies to support, of course, our children, our children who, who want to go off-island to compete with other states, other schools, and in both sports and in the performing arts, and even, you know, in the judiciary, even like Law Day now, when some of our children would actually go in the mock trial and actually compete. But the problem has always been money, monies that could, you know, be made available for them to travel. There was a concern at the same time as well with United Airlines at that time, it started out with Continental Air Mike, and were very supportive of this program, and that's why the program was called the Senator Edward Cruz Medical Referral and Education Mileage Program, because all government officials who travel, they were supposed to bank their, transfer their mileage into this account, so that then, through the Ajuda Foundation, individuals can apply, individuals who are considered indigent can apply to the Ajuda Foundation to be able to get mileage, to be able to send the patient and one escort. And that was working really well, until such time that then, of course, the United Airlines basically felt that, you know, they were the only ones, and that they were going to withdraw from this, if we, if we don't put out, pull out, rather making that a requirement, and also to make sure that other airlines will be able to provide these type of mileage, you know, for the government to use. So what we did then, in several discussions with former Senator Carlotta Leonguero, who actually created the Ajuda Foundation, and worked with the Department of Administration, who is collecting and keeping records of all of these total mileage, is that we decided then to come up with this bill and to do a split, because they were receiving, eventually, United Airlines was able to put in their website that you can click to making donations, and it would list several nonprofit organizations that they support, and Ajuda Foundation is one of them, so anyone, anywhere in the world, who would like to make that donation, can continue to do so. What we, but what we wanted to do is that, because there were banking millions, you know, of miles, and I think at the time when we were talking, when we first discussed this, there were like about a hundred thousand, I mean, a couple of million miles already in the bank, and they were afraid of losing out on this entire program, when the discussion was to share those miles, the mileage, then to be able to, for our children, to use these and travel for sport events, or, you know, for competition or just for performance, that it, you know, was, it was an acceptable thing. Now, what we did at the time was that we made it only for travel. We thought that, you know, we'll tie it to travel only, that when the Department of Administration charges airfares for government of Guam employees to travel on conferences, that those mileage then will be, will be collected and then banked in for the Department of Education then to, you know, disperse them to our schoolchildren. However, it was very difficult for them to do that, because when they make their charges with that credit card, it doesn't say which ones are for airfares and which ones are for goods and services. So it was difficult, you know, to do that, and, of course, they're saying that, you know, we're going to get additional personnel to be able to do this and communicate with them. So rather than do that, then, the best way, and, and of course, DOE has also indicated that it was very difficult then to implement this program, and that the best thing would be is that to get the mileage that is earned through credit card purchases that are not itemized, but rather just in general, all purchases that they get, that the mileage then is greater as well.
those miles, the mileage then to be able to, for our children to use these and travel for sport events or, you know, for competition or just for performance, that it, you know, was it was an acceptable thing. Now, what we did at the time was that we made it only for travel. We thought that, you know, we'll tie it to travel only, that when the Department of Administration charges airfares for government of Guam employees to travel on conferences, that those mileage then will be collected and then banked in for the Department of Education then to, you know, disperse them to our schoolchildren. However, it was very difficult for them to do that because when they make their charges with that credit card, it doesn't say which ones are for airfares and which ones are for goods and services. So it was difficult, you know, to do that. And of course, they're saying that, you know, are we going to get additional personnel to be able to do this and communicate with them? So rather than do that, then the best way, and of course, DOE has also indicated that it was very difficult then to implement this program and that the best thing would be is that to get the mileage that is earned through credit card purchases that are not itemized, but rather just in general, all purchases that they get, that the mileage then is greater as well and that, you know, we would be able then to realize, you know, more mileage. So we're amending, what we're doing here is amending it that it's not just for travel paid, but for rather all purchases made by the government through the use of government of Guam credit card purchases. So that's the change, the small change made in this bill. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Any Senators wished to be heard on the bill? Any Senators wished to be heard on the bill? Madam Speaker, I see no hands.
Since there's none, can I put Senators Nicholas as a co-sponsor as well?
There being no objection. Any other, on the motion to send the bill down? There being no objection.
On Bill 59-33, Senator Torres, you recognize.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move that we place 59, Bill 59-33 into the third reading file and I request permission to briefly discuss my bill.
You may proceed, Senator.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Bill number 59-33 is an act to amend subsection 6111B and to add new subsections 6111D, 6111E, and 6111F, all of Chapter 6, Title 19 Guam Code annotated, relative to personal relations and community property. Madam Speaker, the gist of this bill is current Guam law guiding personal relations and community property is based on decades-old California case law, which has since been updated in California and other jurisdictions. There is, most notably in 2011, a key legislation development that occurred in the state of Massachusetts with the passage of the Alimony Reform Act of 2011. Title 19 Guam Code annotated, section 16111, which is titled Property Relations, allows a husband and wife to contract with one another with respect to the support of each other and with respect to their property rights. The type of agreement between the husband and wife for support and maintenance determines whether it is subject to later modification by the court. As I mentioned, 19 GCA Section 8405 with regard to family support is derived from California Civil Code, Section 139. And the cases construing this Section 139 hold that modification of support provisions in a divorce decree is available only when the support provisions are severable from the provisions dividing property. So to summarize, the ability to modify an order for support depends on whether the provisions relating to the division of property and those relating to support are severable rather than integrated. If they are integrated, the order for support may not be modified unless the parties have provided for or agreed to such modification. Now, as I mentioned earlier, this Guam case law is based on old California case laws and the California statutes have been drastically amended such that in California, an agreement for spousal support is in general subject to subsequent modification or termination by the court order unless the parties specifically agree. So the statutory amendments have eliminated the need of the California Trial Court to examine each agreement to determine if it is integrated. My intention with Bill 59-33 is to enact similar statutory revisions to modernize Guam's law so that the provisions or an agreement for support of either party shall be deemed to be separate and severable from the provisions of the agreement relating to property, which will allow the courts to modify spousal support if substantial changes in circumstances occur. What we're dealing here is with alimony provisions as opposed to property settlement agreements. And one of the underlying concepts with alimony is that alimony is grounded in the recipient's spouse's need for support and the supporting spouse's ability to pay. So essentially, what this will do is it'll just bring our code up to speed, modernize it so that it reflects more accurately the statutes across the states and brings us closer to some of the alimony reform acts that have since been initiated in other states. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, Mr. Vice Speaker, you recognize.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. And I rise in support of the bill that was introduced by the Senator from Santa Rita. It is really something that should have been done a long time ago. And I'm embarrassed to say that this should have, I should have been addressing some of these more recently. I've noticed that the Supreme Court over the last several years has been involved in a considerable number of domestic relation cases on appeals. And I think the reason that they've had to deal with so many domestic relations cases is the fact that we as a body have not addressed, legislation was actually written for domestic relations in the 1930s. And so I commend the good Senator from Santa Rita for having started the process. I think this is only the beginning of what's going to need to be done to bring our domestic relations laws to the 21st century. And I hope to work with her and other Senators in the Guam Legislature to try to address some of those additional issues. I probably shouldn't admit this publicly, but I didn't realize there was a problem with changing or amending domestic alimony. When I was in family court, I just did it. I didn't bother whether it was integrated or it was severable. But the statute was there and fortunately or unfortunately, I wasn't taken up on appeal. But in this case, there was a very substantial case in the Guam Supreme Court in March, in March, I guess it was, yeah, or maybe February, but earlier this year, issued an opinion on a case where the situation had changed, that initially when the parties were, got their dissolution in 1972, the person providing spousal alimony was quite well off. Unfortunately, he, like we, have aged and is starting to cut back on his work and consequently his income has diminished considerably. In reading the Supreme Court case, it was very labored in that the court realized that the, that the, that the person providing the spouse's support, the conditions had changed as it relates to his ability to be able to provide the alimony. But because the fact that the agreement had no, I mean, the dissolution had no provision for any amendment, the court was left without the ability to be able to make a change in spite of the fact that it recognized that it was necessary. And so I applaud this act and I'm hoping that over the next several months that we'll take the time to look at the Guam Supreme Court cases on domestic relations and make the changes so that the courts don't have to make all the rulings from the bench, but that we can make those decisions from here. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. And for those that have difficulty understanding this provision, there is a very good letter in the committee report by the, by a law firm that provided an explanation. And it's, it's in English that.
Layman stone.
Well, even I, it helped me understand that I may have been doing things wrong at some point in the past, but that there was a need to amend this, amend the law. So I'm hoping if everybody, if everybody hasn't had an opportunity, it's just two pages long and it does a very good explanation of why this piece of legislation is necessary.
On the motions, anybody else who'd like to speak? Senators, I know you're all having your own private conversations down there, but do you want to share any of those on the floor? No? Okay, then, so Senator Torres, do you want to close? You want to send it down?
Madam Speaker, I'd like to, on the advice of our legal counsel, I would like to make an amendment to my bill.
Okay, and where would that be?
On page 2, line 18.
Yes, okay.
I would like to change subsection F of section C, make that instead section 4. Because it has to do with the, with the effect of, of a couple of subsections.
On line 18F, right?
Yeah, so we change letter F.
Letter F.
And we make it instead section 4, a whole new section.
Okay, so that will be a whole new section. Senators, do you understand then on page 2, on line 18, the small letter F, that that will become a section 4 instead?
Because what that, what that does essentially is explain that, that the effect of this bill goes forward and it doesn't apply retroactively to anything, there's no expost facto. And then I suppose, I don't know if I need to do it by section, section 4 presently becomes renumbered to section 5.
Okay, so on the, on the motion then to, for subsection F becomes a section 4, no objections?
No objections.
No objections, so ordered. Thank you, Senator. So on the motion then to send 59-33 to the third reading file, hearing, no objections, so ordered. Yeah, the next bill that I have is going to, is going to have some more discussion. So I just want to let everyone know then that we do have a couple more bills with, for Senator Rodriguez and Senator San Nicholas that we have left on the, on the agenda. I don't see it on the agenda, it's not ready yet. I, it's marked in red, so therefore I'm putting it to the side. So we will recess until tomorrow morning at 9:00.